Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. First thing we'll start out with is the prayer be given by Linda. Afterwards, Councilman Brian will get the pledge. He'll go to that one.
Our kind and dear heavenly Father, as we meet as a group of Payson residents, we're thankful, Father, for the opportunity we have of coming and talking about the issues of Payson City. Father, we pray that hearts will be touched and that the citizens of Payson will realize the importance of being here and having a voice. We're thankful for the freedom that we enjoy, and we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Everybody arrive and get your pledge out. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing on the agenda is the consent agenda. The approval of the November 1st, 2017 council minutes and a resolution approving the donations to Payson City Library. Do we have any discussion or we have motion?
Mayor, I move we approve the consent agendas you outlined.
No second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Okay. Next thing on the agenda is public forum. If we have anybody in the audience would like to stand up and address the council, please state your name.
Teresa Hyatt. I just wanted to thank whoever went down there and fixed that sidewalk because I've already had several people tell me that they don't worry about tripping on it now and they like it, that they can go into their business and there's not a hole there. So whoever did it, thank you. Tell your people whoever did it, thank you because they thanked me and I'm the one that did it, you guys did it, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
First, bills, Payson, and I'll thank Council Mayor for this opportunity to express myself. And what I'd like to expound on is dedication and time commitments and so on that you council members and mayors put into the community for the betterment of the community. And I was hoping Larry and Scott were here tonight, but at least I'll get it off my chest. I appreciate the time commitment to you, from you, and sacrifices from you and your families for doing this job. It's a hard job and not very appreciated at times, but you study the issues and make the best vote that you think would be best for the community, and that's what they voted you for. And you've taken it to have them to let the public down in expectations. Maybe our politics at times differ, but that's been in politics. And you know, not only sacrifice from you and your families, but also your expertise in different fields and sharing your talents there. And Scott, you know, I want to emphasize to bring up his lack of willingness to share his equipment and time helping with the roads. And the roads look better now than they have for a long time, and that's because the United States Council is over that, and he has been very actively involved. So thank you. We got two new people, it appears. I guess the vote isn't total yet. We're not taking time to pat each other on the back quite yet. You have to canvass the votes, and that's when the last few votes will come in, and that'll be two weeks from election. So next Tuesday, I assume, will be the canvassing. You have a couple of days to play with, but so when they canvass the votes, the final vote will be in. And the way it stands, I'd like to express my appreciation for those that did run and appears they'll be in, that I hope I'll always support you. And the study curve and learning curve is pretty great for that first six months. And if I can assist them or any of you, I'd be happy to do it in any way I can. But anyway, thank you for your time, your talents. Mayor, I didn't mention you by name, but I thank you for your service and willingness to serve on so many different boards and your active participation on CDBG Grant Committee, which is, I think it's kind of where you pull your hair out at times. I served on it. And anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Forgot to thank the staff.
Thanks to the staff for making everybody look so good. I sincerely do. Yeah, I sincerely do appreciate the staff and all their willingness to go out and help and fix sidewalks and do the things that they do.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public forum. Do we have any staff report?
Don't have much tonight, so I'll be brief. Just a report on the last, I guess, fifteen days of the month. We've had about 501 calls to respond to, made 46 arrests, has ruled it a 95 offenses. We've issued 62 citations, which was 78 violations, two DUIs, 110 traffic stops, and 10 traffic accidents. Now, you may see that we made the news a couple of times this week, which was good for us, bad for them. But it helped hopefully clean up our streets a little bit. So if you guys have any questions, I probably have to discuss the case in the open forum, but if you have any comments or questions.
Just let them go into the next town and then arrest them so it doesn't say Payson.
At least we got the credit to clean it up.
Yeah, no, it was a good thing for to get them.
Anyway, thanks.
Mayor, council, just a few quick updates. That water magic problem, we had a fatigue that popped up right before the concert last year. Hasn't come back, but we went in and put a perforated pipe in there with drain rock so if it does, we can throw a pump back in there and at least pump it out. But it's backfilled, and so now they'll just have to go, you know, put grass back in it and that will be ready for next year. But the water department got that done yesterday. Kent, they've been out at the landfill doing a lot of the green waste grinding and that and getting that because we were about out of what we had, and so they've been out there trying to get that under control and going. And then obviously, paving season is over, so we're done with that other than just fixing, you know, any potholes that come up and stuff. And then, Councilman, to be, Hyatt, we got that sidewalk face like you said, so thank you for that compliment. Kent, those guys got that fixed pretty quick, so I don't know if you have any other questions or concerns, but.
I think you did clean up a bunch of goose nuts. I didn't have a vote on that.
It's paved. It's not the prettiest paved dog I've seen. We are going to overlay that in the spring next year, so.
But did he clean the gutters?
Yeah, they added sweatmen. So I haven't been up there to check for sure, but they did go up there with brooms and water trucks and cleaning. So it should be, but I haven't also checked it.
Okay. Anybody else?
Just quickly, you guys might mention that just thanks to all those who could come. We had a great Veterans Day program down at the veterans facility. It's a great facility and it was standing room only. So we appreciate the veterans facility down there and all they do for the veterans and for our community, so it was a great event.
Okay, any other staff? Councilman Phillips is out of town tonight, so we'll excuse him. Brian?
Yeah, just a couple of things here. One is I met with a person that's over grants for UBU and spent about an hour with me showing us how we could look for grants, and then they have grant writers that they can refer us to. So there aren't a lot of government grants. I think there's probably more state grants than federal government, but it's really hard to find the state ones. Even in their own departments, they don't know where they are. So we talked about even about having some UBU students do a research project and find all the state grants for us. So anyway, that's one thing we look at. The other thing is we have a site visit for a company coming out of the business park this Friday. They're looking at five other places in Utah. It's looking at 40 to 60 acres, and they put four different buildings on it, and full build out would be 600 jobs. Managers would be paid from $8,000 to $120,000 in the year. And just the line of people after 90 days would be paid $17 to $24 an hour, and it's a vehicle assembly industry. So I look forward to that on Friday.
I just want to thank the staff for all the work that they do. And to mention one thing, when Brad mentioned about us getting in the news, I can remember several months, a lot of months ago, how you talked about waving to the police officers. I think they think I'm nuts, and I do not get one wave. So you tell them all that I'm going to be waving at them. I appreciate all the workers and what they do. I know it's a hard job, and I appreciate it. It's too bad that we don't have more people to come to our council meetings so that they can witness the things that are talked about and be a voice. And as we looked at our elections, the percentage that we had, and not just Payson, throughout the whole county, it tells me that there are a lot of disinterested people that just want to go about their lives and not get involved. But I want all of the employees to know how much I appreciate them.
Yeah, this is my turn to echo what Linda said, is I appreciate all of our employees. They're, you know, we say that an awful lot, and we do appreciate them. And we get some grief on and out in the public sometimes, but it's always been my belief that we praise in public and we criticize in-house, not criticize, but we address issues in-house. And for those who think that we don't, we do. We talk about issues. Our department heads talk about issues, and they address them in a professional manner, and they keep it at the right level, and it's not something that we go and we wave around. And so I appreciate the professionalism with which they address the issues that we do have. But overall, they do a fantastic job, and so I'm very grateful for that. Veterans Day, I'm grateful for those who served. I tell my students all the time that America is great because we stand on the shoulders of those who went before us. And it is now our turn to decide whether we will stand on their shoulders and move forward or move backwards. And I'm appreciative of those who have gone before us and have worked really hard, and I hope that we can do the same for future generations that they did for us to get us where we are. We've been working with the library. We had several library meetings. The library's doing amazing things. We are going to, tell me if I'm wrong here, but we're going to reach out to a few other libraries and see if we can get some sort of interlocal agreement where we can increase our circulation. They do need some carpet desperately at some point in time. I'll just throw that plug in there. And I think there was something else I was going to say. Oh, I look forward to working with Brett and Teresa. It is a hard job being on city council. It's a fun job on city council as well as Bill. I don't see him here, but I'm excited and hope that we can work together and look forward to working together in a positive fashion.
Okay, Mike?
I have to echo what Doug says about the employees. I think we have great employees in the city. It's been my pleasure over the past eight years to be associated with many of them and to work with them on an ongoing basis. If there's one thing that will be sad for me, it will be the fact that I won't have that same interaction with them on a regular, ongoing basis. A few other things that I'd like to mention, Mayor, is some stuff that came up in the chamber board meeting. First is the Great Pumpkin Hunt. They had one of the most successful years they've had in having this event, and felt that it did a real good job both here in Payson as well as in Santa Fe. Small Business Saturdays coming up, and for the life of me, I didn't write that down and don't know what date that is. I know it's very soon. Is there anybody here from the chamber that can help me out on that?
A week before Black Friday.
Okay.
It usually, isn't it? Or isn't that this week? Or the day after Black Friday.
Oh, it's the day after Black Friday.
The day after Black Friday.
So that's a great opportunity to get kids to see a show and at the same time to contribute to what needs to be there, what we need to do for those that need assistance. Because you bring in foodstuffs and so forth like that, and that helps. Banquet for the chamber will be in January. Tentatively is at the veterans home, but we don't know for sure. It may be somewhere else, so either I'll let y'all know before the end of the year or somebody that succeeds me in that assignment will let you know. We talked about the city mural project. We had that presentation here in council chambers, I think, maybe a month and a half ago or so. And they have been meeting with the groups that are going to be doing that. I think we have an opportunity to have some pretty fun stuff done and let our youth do some painting, and we have several business owners that are willing to let them put those murals on the side of their buildings, so we'll be seeing that coming up. I have to also, I was at the veterans event on Saturday. I had a personal interest in that, particularly since my dad was out there for not very long time, but I also had an opportunity to meet with the administrator about a week ago, and I told him about an excellent job that they do and that we're sure appreciative that we have such a world-class facility here in Payson. I have to thank the work of all those who helped get that here. I know Mayor Moore was involved in that very extensively, but I know the council as well as the rest of the employees also had a great hand in that. And it is a facility that we need to encourage a lot of people to continue to support here. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. All right. We'll just go to the next is scout attendance. Do we have any scouts tonight? No scouts? Okay, so we'll pass that up. Next thing on our agenda is the request for use of the IO infill overlay request to reduce the frontage requirements for Utah County Parcel, 08150001, located 775 East, 100 South, in the R110 residential, not the Daniel.
Like Councilmember Carter said, I wish more people were here because these are fun meetings, zoning, right? We just reached the fun part here, so once this gets up, we'll be underway. So this first request is for the IO overlay, that's an infill overlay. What's going on here is we have this neighborhood that's R110 and a lot that is a legal nonconforming, so a grandfathered-in lot. It's a buildable lot because it was created at a time when this was permitted, oh, thank you. But any modification to the lot would require that this lot come into conformance with one of our zoning laws. It doesn't meet the R110, which is zoning for that area, and so we have this overlay that allows it to come into compliance with the overlay zone, but we need to apply that overlay zone. Currently, there are two lots, and it's going to stay that way. So here's the plot. Let's see, I have this magic laser right here. So there's this lot and this lot right here that are owned by the same individual, and he would like to sell this lot, and this is the lot that's changing. So what he's doing is he's doing a boundary line adjustment just to switch this boundary line over, moving that from the west over to the east. That's going to change this lot, which is why we need to bring it into compliance with something, so that's why we're doing the IO overlay. And that's the lot in question, and you can see that right here. So he's moving it over about 27 feet. So originally, it goes all the way to this line here. Now it's just going to go to here, and this portion is going to become part of this lot here. So we're keeping just two lots, we're not creating the third lot. And the reason that he's doing that is so, or would like to do that, is so he can maintain ownership and access to this barn, which is a barn that has been in, that he's had for quite some time. So again, if he's selling off this portion, if it weren't for moving the property line, he'd lose access and lose ownership of that barn. So that's why he's applying to do this. R110 zone, some things about the zone. First of all, the reason why this lot does not comply is the R110 zone requires 100 feet of frontage. This lot, as you can see down here, this is the street, does not have it. It only has about 47 and a half feet of frontage. So this is more or less a flag lot. A flag lot, you typically see a 20-foot, what we call a flag pole that's going back here. Here it's 47 and a half feet, so it's not like your standard flag lot. But again, it doesn't meet that 100-foot requirement. Part of the R110 also is the square footage, and these lots are both, well, this lot here is quite large. The original square footage, we're looking at 17,770 square foot lot, so 0.41 acres. With the modification, it would still greatly exceed the minimum requirements of that zone, and it would become a 14,000 square foot lot. Additionally, the lot that's obtaining the new area to go back to the barn would now increase from 7,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet, which actually brings it more into conformance with the current zoning. That existing lot down here is also a legal nonconforming lot. You can see only 68 feet of frontage and the current square footage underneath the current zoning. There's already house on that lot. This lot's vacant, so that's why we're more worried about that one. But the IO overlay would apply to both of these lots because any modification of this one would also have to bring it into compliance, and you can see here that it's not in compliance either. So the IO overlay allows this modification to occur. So the IO overlay requirements, we have the 20-foot wide access to the back of the property, curb gutter and sidewalk installed. Both of those are met here, and then we have some of these subjective criteria here at the top, like allowing orderly development, encouraging reinvestment, maintenance of our communities, stabilizing and enhancing property values, fostering community pride, promoting new developments, strengthening the economy, and improving quality of life. Staff feels that it meets those requirements because it allows this lot to be kept as a buildable lot rather than stay as a vacant lot. And it's similar in size to surrounding lots. We feel like the spirit of zoning ordinance is maintained by applying this overlay and allowing both of these lots to have houses. That's how they were originally intended. And so we feel that it's appropriate to apply the overlay here. I guess also it's worth mentioning, it's in the staff report, that there is a concern about this north property line. The owner to the north has mentioned that. Application of the overlay does not affect that. Also, today, we're looking at moving the west boundary line over towards the east. None of that's going to change the location of the north boundary line. If it does turn out that there's a dispute with whether the survey was applied accurately on the ground or whether a previous fence is the boundary line rather than the survey line, that would be a civil matter, so that can be addressed later through mediation or through the legal system. It's not really, that's not legislative action, and it doesn't affect moving the boundary from the west to the east or application of the overlay. So the applicant and the neighbor, if they so choose, if it turns out that there is a discrepancy among surveys, they can deal with that on their own. So that's not what's under question today. So I believe that summarizes things. I try to go as quick as possible, but I know you have this information in your staff reports already. So I think that concludes the presentation. Oh, and then the actions are, of course, approve, deny it, or give or mandate back to staff if you have more, if you need more information. Of course, you can ask me now.
Okay, do we have any discussion?
I have a question. So is there curb and gutter in both front of those postal lots now then?
Yes. We have a motion.
I have to make a motion that we approve the request for the IA IO inner fill overlay zone for the parcel 08150001, the R110 residential zone.
Here we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second? I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Mike?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. All right, next thing on the agenda is the request for a zone change for the Utah County Parcel, 300660027 and 30660010 portion from the H5 Annexation Holding Zone and to R19 Residential. And also, do we want to do the preliminary plat and final? Do we want to do two separate?
We can do the discussion for both items together, but we'll need two separate.
Then we'll just do two. Okay. So it's the same thing, just we just can do the discussion one, discussion.
Okay, before we get into this, I need to indicate that I know Mr. Bastian, I've dealt with him in the past at my employment, so conflict of interest.
Same with me.
Okay. So with that introduction, I'm going to go through just real quickly. I noticed that I see some familiar faces in the audience. So some of the residents of Heritage Village are here tonight. They've seen this presentation before, but for those that have not seen it, I'll go through it quickly. But I know Mayor and council members, you do have a copy of all the information in your packet. So the area that we're looking at is we're looking at about 500 and a quarter acres. It's located at about 1300 South and 1150 West. So it's this area that's indicated here. You've got 1400 South here, 930 West, and you have the initial phases of the Heritage Village development located to the north. So the overview of the proposal, as the mayor had presented, is a request for zone change as well as preliminary plan and final plat approval of the subdivision. We are requesting use of the planned residential development to get a density bonus to add additional dwelling units to their overall numbers. If the approval is granted tonight, then staff will present a development agreement to you at a subsequent meeting. And then also, because the property is part of the Emerald Turf Farm at this time and is protected by an agricultural protection area, that property will need to be removed from the agricultural protection area. The applicant has recently submitted the application for that, and that will be discussed at a subsequent meeting as well. And then the applicant is also requesting various modifications to city requirements, and I will address those further in a minute. So the zone change request, the property is currently on the A5H Annexation Holding Zone. It's an interim zoning that was applied to the property when the property was annexed into the city. The applicant is requesting R19 residential, and that zone would allow single-family dwellings or two-family dwelling structures, twin homes or twoplexes with an overlay zone. The applicant is not requesting approval of duplexes or twin homes, but the R19 zone would allow that option following the zone change. We also reviewed it for consistency with the south. We also reviewed it for consistency with the South Meadows area specific plan. This area on the plan actually shows four units to the acre. Party of the development, they're requesting preliminary final plat for 24 single-family dwelling pads in the R-19 zone. It'd be an additional phase of the existing active adult community. They are requesting approval of planned residential development. That allows them the flexibility in the lot area and lot frontage requirements so they can do building pads instead of building lots. And then also, it provides them an opportunity as for additional density in the zone. So just as a little overview of the density, the base density of R-19 would allow 3.5 units to the acre, so we could have 20. The specific plan shows four units to the acre, so that would give them up to 22. The reason they're requesting the density bonus is because they want the 24 units total. And so they're asking for an additional four units than what the base density or the specific plan would allow. And then the dwellings and project features need to be consistent with the previous phases. So project layout and design. This gives you an overview of how it connects to the existing phase. So this road, 1150 west, would be extended. And then there would be a connection to 1400 south, which is an arterial status street. So they are showing those lots. Some in the middle, on the perimeter, they're showing the extension of, or the continuation of the citywide trail system that would come through here and then down to connect to 1400 south.
Do we ever do the grid system at all anymore?
Yeah, we don't see the grid system very often.
No, we don't. We just have.
Housing product and materials. These are some pictures that were taken of some of the homes in the existing phases. So the applicant is proposing to do similar housing style, materials, colors, different things that would just be continued to be the last phase of the development. Landscaping, these are also pictures of the previous phases showing that they have tried to incorporate a lot of zerescape landscaping, you know, conservation of water, showing how that is, how a good blend of vegetation, zerescape, and then also some green spaces throughout the development.
I have a quick question on back to slide. Didn't we have a lot of problems with water runoff on that design right there between the homes? Wasn't that like a big issue that we were dealing with?
There have been some drainage issues in the development.
Has that been addressed? Are we still looking at the same problem? We're still looking at the same problem? Nobody says no to that, that I can see.
I can't speak to that.
Would that be better for drainage? Have a new rock?
Well, and I don't know if it's necessarily the rock. I think it was the slope and the improvement of, so we can, and.
That's what I'm thinking, it's not to be.
I don't know.
It would be from the landscaping, it would be from the.
And mayor, I know the applicant's here and maybe when he comes up in his presentation, he could address the drainage issues. Because I know that there have been some concerns and applicants have been working with some of the owners on that. So fencing, they're looking at doing consistent fencing with the previous phases. On the west side of the property, they will continue this, the masonry decorative wall along the west property line. And then on the east side of the development, they will have the final siding with the decorative pillars. Project amenities, just as a side note. Originally, when the applicant had presented the application, is they wanted to use the existing amenities in the previous phases to gain their density bonus for this phase. The applicant was notified that this phase has to stand alone, that the previous amenities were used towards the density bonus that they got for the first two phases. And so they have proposed some additional amenities within this next phase that will need to be considered by the city council tonight in determining whether or not those additional four units should be approved. Some of those include building design materials, pavilion and a barbecue area, the upgraded fencing, the landscaping standards and design, and then others that the applicant will indicate in his presentation. Compliance with city regulations. The applicant has been working with staff to satisfy the requirements of city ordinance. Information has been submitted to them. They've been very responsive on getting information back to us. We even received a new set of plans today. And so we'll continue to review those in their effort to get final approval and move forward with the development. Now, the request for modification of waivers. In order to use the planned residential development, one of the basic requirements of use of that tool is that they have to provide recreational vehicle parking for any development that is over 20 units. Waivers were provided for the first two phases and the applicant is requesting that a waiver be provided for the third phase. They do have regulations in place that does not allow those to be stored within the development. And so they're requesting just consistent regulations with this last phase. They are also asking for alternate street cross-section. So the width of the road is consistent with city ordinance. It's 40 feet of asphalt. But they are asking for a rolled curb and then sidewalk on only one side of the street instead of both sides of the street. And I'll address that a little bit further in a moment. Again, development agreement will need to be done. And then there's several final plat items that cannot be done until approval's been granted, such as transfer water performance guarantee. Some of those listed there. So planning commission, so public input and planning commission recommendation. So the public hearing, we only require one public hearing and that is conducted at the planning commission meeting. And so that was conducted last month. So any additional public comment is at the discretion of the city council tonight. The recommendation from the planning commission included a recommendation of approval for the zone change. And then the subdivision was recommendation of approval with conditions. There was significant public comment at the planning commission meeting. The minutes have been included in your packet. And several of the residents in the development, in the project, have also submitted comments in writing. Some of them for, some of them not necessarily against, but would like to see some changes made as the applicant is moving forward. And so those were included in your packet. So their recommendation was with staff conditions, that the fencing be consistent with city standards and that sidewalks be installed on both sides of the street. Which leads me to what the latest proposal is. So city ordinance typically for any residential street requires sidewalks on both sides of the street unless an alternate cross-section is approved by the city council. So there could be a number of reasons why you may want to change, you know, the street depending on the location of the city. The planning commission is recommending that they be on both sides of the street as a result of a lot of the comment that was raised by the residents that were in attendance at the meeting. They were concerned with their safety of walking in the road to get to some of the amenities there. As city staff had reviewed it a little further, because there is not sidewalks on both sides of the streets in the entire development, we felt that there could be a compromise that requires sidewalk because this area, the center areas of the development already have sidewalks. So it's the perimeter lots that do not have sidewalks, so the centers do. And so it is proposed by staff or recommended by staff that if you continue with sidewalk in this location and have sidewalk along here, you're not only connecting these residents to 1400 south, but in essence, you've got some sort of pedestrian facility on both sides of this road. It would just be these lots here that wouldn't. But if you were to put a sidewalk in, it doesn't lead to anywhere. I mean, they could cross the street and continue up. But just following along with the previous phases of the development, it was recommended by staff that they included on.
The other development, did they only have one sidewalk?
Yeah, on one side of the street, yeah. And so it was staff's suggestion that it be located here, which the applicant has modified the plans to show that, that the city council needed to sign. You know, the best alternative for pedestrians for business development. And then that leads me to the last one. You're looking at two land use applications, the zone change. If the zone change is approved, it has to be done by ordinance. And that is included in your packet. And then we're looking at preliminary plan and final plat. I forgot to put final plat there. But we are looking for preliminary and final. And then you can remand it back to staff or the planning commission for further review, approve with conditions or deny the application. And then as always, any motion should include findings. And then the applicant, Byron, is here.
Byron, did you have, do you want to come up or?
Yes. I don't know if you wanted me just to answer questions we might ask.
Or did you have anything you wanted to say before we?
As far as the sidewalk, like Jill was saying, if we do it on both sides of the street, it would basically dead-end. I don't know if it could allow you to have a sidewalk just dead-end or if it has to be continuous. But what we're asking for is to, would have put a sidewalk on the other side of the street to be able to connect everything together. And then we have the trail system that goes through the project as well. As far as water in between the houses, we do put full gutters around the entire house because a lot of the water, you know, a big part of the water would come from the roofs. So we put full gutters to try and, it's really only, the only water that falls between the homes is, you know, what falls out of the sky, not really from the roof drainage. One thing that would help, I don't know if this is something the city would consider, but if there's a way we could put landscaping in after, you know, previous winter, after seasons for one winter with the water, allowing the ground to settle and then come in and put a final grade on it and then put the landscaping in, that would help. Even as hard as you try and compact everything, you still, you do your best, you're going to get maybe 85% compaction. So when the sprinklers hit it, water hits it, you're still going to have settling. You know, in most subdivision where you're allowed to not put the landscaping in until the following, until it's season, it helps because you have that settling taken care of first and then come in and put the landscaping in. I don't know if that's some.
What have we been doing for storm drain down there? Have we got retention pods? What are we doing?
This one will have an underground system. It's just north of the pavilion, right there. And then we've made sure that they grade it to like swales back behind the units and that so that it doesn't go towards the homes like the first phase did. So that's how we've addressed.
What about this tree?
There's catch basins and it'll go into that storm drain system, but it's underground.
Okay. Just so we're addressing it, we don't end up with the rest of, like we have in the rest of town.
Is that a good idea? Let it, the ground settle for a year and then put on the vinyl? In your estimate, like, is that going to solve the water problem? Is the water problem big between houses?
Well, I mean.
I see what I'm guessing your residents kind of shaking their heads.
Your vegetation is what slows down, you know, keeps your erosion from happening. But, you know, I agree with Byron in the fact that it's going to settle no matter what you do. But we, our current ordinance requires that you put it in and not wait a year.
At least the front and the side in that.
Is it a function of houses being too close together?
That doesn't help.
It doesn't help, so the density bonus, you're putting them closer together, you're going to compound the problem of water between houses?
Well, like I say, we, in any construction, you know, you're going to have settling problems with the weather. But we try and get back and, you know, address anything that comes up. And we have had, at one time, all the parks sloped all towards one house and it all was supposed to drain between homes. We had a big thunderstorm. That house did flood, but since then, we've put in a retaining wall. We've had the park now slopes out in the middle and we put, you know, drains out there so the water doesn't go to those homes anymore.
But it's still flooding.
So we try and address problems as they come up.
Sure.
And we're just trying to continue, as far as this phase, we're just trying to continue the same style of the homes. All the lots will be, except for one, will be five foot larger than the other lots we have. So we're able to do a little bit bigger garage and it gives a little more flexibility with the design of the home.
Your development's beautiful, I'm just concerned about the long-term, so it's going to be long-term affected the residents that live there.
As far as we have the issue on the sidewalk from both sides.
Well, I am concerned about the side.
Which development of that, Mike?
All of Saddle Brook.
Yeah. And this Saddle Brook, I know, I thought it went down by the temple somewhere earlier.
The Maples only has it on one side.
Alaska, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, the sidewalk's another issue for me. I mean, if I lived in one of those houses right there and I get a little more advanced than I am right now and I've got a walker and I want to go visit my neighbor three houses down, regardless of whether that dead ends or not, I want a safe walking path. That's my concern. And that's something that's been concerning these other areas that we've done one side only. So I've got a big concern with that personally. I don't want to say no, but I want to make sure that people are safe. I don't want anybody else to have trouble.
I have a couple of questions for you, Byron. On the walking, or the trail, is that going to be paved or is that?
It'll be concrete.
Concrete, so it'll be like a sidewalk then?
Yes, it's going to be a kind of rendering, so it's grass on both sides. It won't be just a straight sidewalk.
I'm, yes, from my perspective, we're going to basically have two sidewalks on both sides on one of them, but the other doesn't have anything. So if I was looking at it, I'd probably want the sidewalk to go around the other. If we're going to do one sidewalk, to go around the other way. So at least they have something where the others can just go across the street and follow all that, the trail if they wanted to.
Where does the trail come through, Yankee?
Over there in the corner.
It's coming in the top right? And then it goes?
So it goes out and it goes over by Weineger Estate. So it actually goes outside the development.
Okay, so essentially provide a sidewalk on the inner group there, the inner area there.
Yeah, so this side, so yeah, so this trail's going to take you outside the development and up and around where this sidewalk will take you directly to the path of the amenities of the development. I mean, they can still, I mean.
But on the other street, you don't have anything.
Yeah, there's nothing on the other street.
I guess what I was saying is taking the trail to get to the, to the clubhouse is going to be.
I don't think that's.
Oh, I'm not talking about. They're not talking about safety.
No, and I'm just saying that was the concern of the residents, is that they want to be able to walk safely within their development, whether it's to their neighbors or if it's getting to those amenities.
Right, right.
And so they wanted to find a better route to get to the central location of the development.
Sure.
With safety as a matter of concern, would it be better if we had a sidewalk on the other side as well? Do you understand what I'm talking about? Because on the west side, as I'm understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is there a sidewalk at all in that part, right there, on the west side? On the west side?
There is not any proposed here now. And when you get to this point, there isn't any continuing.
There's nothing on that side.
On the west side. There is on the east side. So, I mean, anyone coming here to a sidewalk, they'd stop across the street to get, to continue on the pedestrian facilities. But it would get, I mean, it would end in this location because there isn't anything further on.
What if you put it in front of the 23 and 24, then put it at least on one side of the road? It's still lining the other sidewalk.
Yes, so the, you're saying that, so what about the center section have a sidewalk all the way around? Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's their concern. So if you brought your sidewalk straight down here and around there, you have it on one side, but yet it doesn't pay any. But that one doesn't have it on the other side.
Then you have the trail on the other side.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, at least you have sidewalk all the way around.
So. Problem is, then we go back and we have the argument again like we did before, if you have people who want to get across and.
I'm really more concerned with the people living on that side that want to go visit people.
You have only two houses in the middle. Person all the ones on the outside.
It's kind of typical of the whole project though. And we have sidewalk on the center section of the other project, but nothing on the, on either side of the street.
On the other phases.
Yeah. So we're just trying to continue what.
And that's why staff had recommended this because on those other center areas, there's multiple homes that benefit from it. Where this one, if you just did the sidewalk around the perimeter, you're only benefiting two buildings, two building pads instead of multiple in the first two phases.
Everybody can cross the road and have a sidewalk. You don't have, if you, all of them on the one side don't have any sidewalks on either side. And all you have to do is cross the road and you could have sidewalk where they don't have anything now, is what I'm saying.
So if you were putting it where?
If you put it in the middle. Then all they have to do is cross the road and then they'd have a sidewalk.
Well, and our thought was if you put it.
If someone crossed the road.
If you put it around here, then all of these have to cross a road versus if you do it here, only this many need to cross.
Well, but they have, they cross the road and they cross the road to nothing.
Well, they would cross to here.
Well, no, if you're like seven, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, you have no sidewalk to cross to.
Right. Well, you could require that, that he put sidewalk here and here. We're just trying to make it convenient for, for as many as we can while still giving them a route to connect into with the previous phases.
So Byron, the follow-up on that, can you fit side, more sidewalk in or does that take away, is there room to do that or not?
There'd be, so when it's twenty-three and twenty-four, I mean, putting that sidewalk across there, that wouldn't, that wouldn't affect anything. People, then the people on the further side can walk and get on that sidewalk and walk, if that helps at all, I don't know.
And I had, I had one more question, and this, this is more to staff and to Byron, but, and for speed limits in there, um, since it is kind of a private community and we really don't want traffic using this as a way to get someplace, is it possible that if the homeowners wanted to have a lower speed limit and post a lower speed limit and?
Yeah, we can post it whatever we deem safe.
Okay. Cause I don't want that, I don't want, this is a place for people to figure it's a shortcut, because to me it's not a shortcut. This is a retirement community and we need to try to keep it as a retirement community.
We could mark it as a not, not through traffic.
Good.
Okay. Um, so do we have any other discussion or do we have a motion?
I have a question for staff. I know there was a lot of discussion at the, at the planning commission meeting about the traffic patterns and, and were we gonna talk with UDOT, see if there's any chance that we can get that nine thirty west and eight hundred south have a light there? Or we had any further information on that?
We did reach out to UDOT and we talked to them and we asked, because I know some of the residents had talked about, um, doing a, having a petition. And so I, I had talked with our, our, um, project manager for the Payson area and he says, the best way to go about that is, is for if the residents do wanna put a petition together and, and we can forego the petition, you know, if the city council wants to move forward, but they wanted something to come through the city, because sometimes you have petitions from residents that come in that you, that the city council may or may not be in agreement with. But they said if they want, if they have a petition, if they have some concerns, it comes to the city council, city council's supporting that request, then we would forward that on to, um, UDOT to do a warrant study. They said they, there have been warrant studies done for that intersection. Um, he didn't know off the top of his head how, how long it's been since they've done one, but he says if, if something was coming from the city to do a warrant study, that's probably the best, um, way to move that forward.
Yeah, that's one, I'm thinking I'm really concerned about. I, I think we desperately need one there. I think we need to get UDOT off the center. That's, I'd like to do whatever we can to move that process forward.
And, and as you probably read in, in the comments, um, in your packet, that's what residents' concern is, is that this development, um, you know, the previous phases is becoming a shortcut to get to the commercial area. And so if there's a way that, you know, we could peak them on those roads that are designated for that heavier traffic, um, it's just, it's very inconvenient. It's difficult to get on eight hundred south because of the amount of traffic.
I, I, I know there's people who wanna get to the commercial areas, but just as badly they wanna avoid that nine thirty west intersection.
Yeah, I agree.
This is a way to get to a light, to get out, and I think we really need to press UDOT on this issue. And if that'll help, you know, we need to wanna get the residents to do a petition, but I think as a city, we kinda really need to lean on them on this.
Travis has got it.
I requested a warrant study last year, which they did, and it did not warrant it. Three light, two intersections do not warrant it very easily, and there's not an accident rate there that will warrant it, so.
Well, I think that's kinda sad if we have to wait, UDOT has to wait for a number of accidents. Now, I lived, I lived on nine hundred south and I was getting on, trying to get on one, one ninety-eight going down Sixth East, and long before they decided to put a deal there, I was going all the way through, you know, I was going all kinds of different directions. And so I can understand their concern because we're creating a path for people to get there.
Well, the-
To get to a light.
The new light at fourteen hundred south on the highway, the only reason it warranted it was because of the accidents.
Well, and I understand that. I'm just saying that's sad and I think as a city, we need to really press them. That's gonna be a conversation we're having with our representatives, a conversation we need to be having with UDOT and saying, you know, this is, this is really a concern. We're, we shouldn't have to wait for an accident, somebody get killed.
We had some of those self-driving cars that immediately crashed into trucks to increase our accident count.
I think, hey, Council, we, the staff does have a meeting with the region, region three director in a couple of weeks, so we can share those concerns with her.
Can I go?
That's something that needs to be put on-
I'm serious, I would like to go.
So yeah, so we, we meet with her often just to bring up some of these, these issues that are raised, so.
That needs to be put on, uh, the tip projects and all of that stuff.
Definitely need to continue the discussion at all levels, Mayor, like you're, like you're suggesting.
I mean, it needs to be pressed on a little bit higher, harder that way too. Okay, do we have any more discussion or do we have a motion? We need two motions. Do we have a motion?
I'm still concerned about the sidewalks. Twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty, nineteen, eighteen, seventeen, sixteen, fifteen. I'm more concerned about that one, the two in the middle.
Okay, well, let's go back to the, uh, let's go for the zone change. Let's start off with that one. We have these discussions on the zone change.
So the zone change, we're giving them four extra lots and they're improving the-
Zone change is just from the A five H to the R one nine, no density on us. It's just the change. It, it provides a mechanism to get to this, to the next motion with the increased density.
I'll make a motion that we request, that we approve the zone change for the parcels thirty, zero six, six, oh, zero, zero, two, seven, and zero, zero, ten, a portion of it from A five H annexation holding zone to the R one nine residential zone.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Brian?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, motion carries. Now, this is a big one. Plot and final plot plan. Area each. Discussion or a motion?
Can we ask the residents that are sitting out here, is the sidewalk a concern to you? It's a big concern to me, but can we ask, can we get some feedback?
Well, we'll have a couple of them, but you gotta come up here to the microphone. I'll, I'll allow two of you to come up. We've already had a, uh, over caring in White Collat, so, although that should all be in your minutes.
I've got four issues.
Just please say your name.
Dale Hunger, Payson, I live in Heritage Village, about the sidewalk issue. I think it is a concern because we have several people, well, three people I know of that are walkers and one in a wheelchair. And if they go around, they have to cross the road to get where the sidewalk is, because there's only a sidewalk on the inner racetrack. Um, and for this, you need to have at least a sidewalk where it's written red and went around the rest of the island in the middle at the minimum. That's my comment on the sidewalk. I got, you asked questions about drainage between the homes. I've got a copy of the, the city, the approved city plan for original development that shows drains supposed to come, the back swales supposed to go between each room, each house out. The way the landscape are, the landscape contractor has done it quite often, what's between the houses is lower than what's the backyard and the front yard. And I got, I'm working with Byron and others to get a drain in that area to take it out to the street. So that's, that's ace, one solution. Uh, but that is consistently a problem. And the problem is the backyard drains in between my houses. The last heavy rain we had, I can show you pictures, I don't want you. The other, the fence standards, here are the east side. Number one, I don't like your vinyl plastic fence standard for the city, because I have that in my backyard and kids kick through it and had two panels on for a year and a half. But I, never mind, but I would ask you to consider putting, um, the cast fence on the east side, because you've got neighbors that are there now with no fence, that, and existing houses. So, yeah, those people need to be considered. Um, density bonus, I think that you've got an issue of diluting the previous amenities when you come in. Now, this is pertinent to an HOA like this community. You're not gonna do anything about it now, and I, I wouldn't want to say, don't approve this because, but you all need to have a staff sit down and think about, if you have another one of these communities come in and have three or four phases to it, then the initial amenities like the clubhouse, pool, those need to be sized for the total package. Because what you're doing is you're diluting the amenities. For those of us that are living in this dense community, you're diluting the amenities that were put in for phase one, phase two. Phase three was not even considered, even though they had the dream of maybe going on, the original owner of the project. And so that's, I guess, an RV waiver, you know, I, I agree with that. That RV parking in this area probably wouldn't be all that great. But you've gotta have consideration of where people store gasoline for the generators. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Kitty Keller, Payson resident, I just wanted to agree with you Doug about the sidewalks. I personally live in the Maples, only part of the streets have sidewalks and it's a disaster. Um, and setting up the HOAs that bounce from one, um, uh, you know, one issue to the next one that advances on in years, it just compounds dramatically down the road. So I say, whatever path you have in there, does it supersede a sidewalk? I would say no. I'd say set your community so they all have sidewalks, so everyone has a good, um, walking ability. We're all supposed to be out walking, walking in the road. It's just not safe. And whether you have a walker or whether you're on your own two feet. I just think it needs to be established generally across the board without exceptions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion from staff or from council or motion?
Well, I would recommend that there's a sidewalk. I think, I think these communities without sidewalks on both sides are a danger to the residents. Um, they cause a lot of problems down the road. I would say no personally.
So you wanna make that in form of a motion or what are you gonna, or just state your position?
I'm stating my position right now.
Okay.
I'm aware of other council members.
You wanna go back, Jill, to the, where would you suggest putting the sidewalk down?
I would put it where all the houses are, twenty-two, twenty, or twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty, nineteen, eighteen, all of those is where I would put it in, because if you're, if you're visiting your neighbors, you can't visit your neighbors. I mean, it's nice if you cross the street. It would be nice to have it on the other two, but there's only two houses there, so I agree with them there, that, that those two houses there. But even though it dead ends, I can stay on the sidewalk, especially if I live down in that corner there and there's no sidewalk on the other side and there's no sidewalk on that side, I can still walk all the way up on a sidewalk and just have to cross the street where it dead ends. I, I just look more at, at the community, the neighborhood community. Like I can't visit my neighbors unless I'm going out onto the street. It, I can cross the street and get on a sidewalk if I wanna visit the neighbors over there, but then I cross the street and I go down a little bit and I go back to my same side of the street, so I can visit my neighbors safely. That's my concern.
So Jill, these roads are a little bit narrower than the standard road, right?
No, this is a standard forty, made of asphalt.
Okay.
So it's only, the only change that they're having to the cross section is rolled curb instead of your high back curb and sidewalks on all the ones that-
The first development, I think we let it go with the smaller roads.
The, the previous two phases are standard with-
Well, they, they were both standard, okay. I was thinking the first one.
I believe that they were, um, requested to be more narrow.
Originally, when, built there or whatever, how that-
But they are standard.
So Byron, I have a question for you. Besides cost, is there, would it not work to put a road from around our sidewalk from twelve up to, uh, twenty-two on that west side?
So you're saying on both sides with the, and not in the-
Not in the middle, yeah.
I just wondered if it actually meets, uh, if it would be against code to have a sidewalk going dead end. I don't think you can do that. You know, we could put a sidewalk in the center so all they have to, you know, say walk across the street. But I don't, and Jill may be, may know this better, but I, I don't know if that would meet even state code to have a sidewalk just dead end.
How the code, Travis?
Well, the best way to address that is put an ADA ramp and then put another ADA ramp across the road, but that's about the only way you could address that.
But couldn't you just have a crosswalk at the end of the-
Yeah, but you have to have an ADA ramps to do that.
I don't wanna kill your development. You know, we're glad that you're here and appreciate that all that you've done. I just, I have too many developments without sidewalks throughout all of our community. I don't think it's a good idea. I can't vote for that. So, I'm one for, so.
I'm still having issues with why we can't have it on the other side and give access to those people. How much would the cost be for those ramps? I mean, is it that much more expensive?
Sidewalks may be expensive. I understand that. I'm playing random. It's not gonna be that expensive, is it? I don't, I don't know. I'm not a-
I'm not sure either. Applicants asking for density bonus, you know, you have to decide if the amenity package that he has or if there's some, I mean, and he's asking for a waiver from, from the standard. And he has to justify to you that not having sidewalks on both sides of the street is preferable in this particular location. Because the standard is, is you have sidewalks on both sides of the street. But the ordinance does give an applicant the ability to demonstrate to you that maybe it isn't preferred in a certain location. And that's what he's doing tonight, is, is he believes that the connection with fourteen hundred south, which will have sidewalks on both sides of the street and this connection into the previous phases is, um, would be adequate for this development.
Court says he has got it, but he's asking that, but there's an exception that he doesn't for a density comment.
I'd like to make a comment. Um, probably because I'm the oldest one up here. Um, I know that I live on a street that there's only-
No sidewalk?
Two sidewalks. We've got them down. Um, two sidewalks, and I've witnessed, and our road comes to a stop, you can't go straight through. But I've witnessed a lot of people walking in front of my house that have closely, the cars have closely come no close to them. And I've worried about that. It worries me when I'm, because my road is narrow. Um, so I, I think sidewalks for the elderly, for us elderly fifty-five and older, uh, I think, oh, they're really needed.
My recommendation then would be if you don't pass it unless we include the sidewalk on that side.
But I also read all of the letters from the residents and most of them are just excited about this and say that they want to see it come. So there were several that talked about sidewalks, but anyway, that's my thought.
Or we can, uh-
I have a motion that we address sidewalks and come back with the resolution on how to put sidewalks in, table it and come back with sidewalks.
I think you gotta have that. End your motion for the plot, final plot, yeah?
Well, they're asking for preliminary and final. If you feel like they, you need to remand it back to homework- If you feel like they, you need to remand it back to homework information, that is an option. Or, or you could just make a motion and say this. I don't know, I don't know what the applicant's timeframe is for sure also, you know, for remanding it. I don't, I don't know if he wants to address that, but.
Can I clarify, you made a motion to table and come back with sidewalks, right?
Okay, did he have a second?
Yeah, he has a second on that.
Is that one dying?
So, he's made a motion then, Dave. So we table, if you want to make your own motion? Or do you want to keep your motion then?
I'll keep my motion, because there's not a lot of decisions being made, so.
Exactly. Okay, we have a second.
Do we table it and come back with a discussion with sidewalks being included into it?
Okay, we have a motion to table it, the issue, and only give him a preliminary? On the coming back to staff, or how does that? Or just?
I don't need to word that, is that okay?
Cause you can get a final.
So we're remanding this back to staff.
So you're remanding it back.
Cause I'm here to.
We're remanding it back to staff.
Are you remanding it fully preliminary and final back to staff to review? Or are you wanting to grant preliminary, but not final until they resolve the sidewalk issue? Or have other options for the sidewalk issue?
I would, yes. Well, I, I'm not, I'm not, we'll remand it all back to staff. Right, no preliminary or final. That's my motion. If someone else wants to jump in and help out, there's a lot of quiet voices here. So we've got a motion. Agree with me, I feel, but.
What are the advantages of remanding it all back as opposed to?
And we can call on the vote, I mean, you can do a second and then we can discuss it.
Let's, let's, well, have we, let's put it this way first. Do we have a second on his motion?
Remand back to staff and?
Not, not yet.
Was sidewalks the best, is that your?
Yes.
Okay, so we've got a motion. Do we have a second? Seeing done, but none, the motion will be dropped for lack of.
Dies.
Dies for lack of a second?
Dang it.
So, now, do we have other discussion, or do we have another motion? Byron, will you have one?
I just have a, I mean, part of the reason of trying to get the four extra lots is by doing the PUD, putting in a pavilion, doing some of those nice amenities. I mean, if we're, if we've got to put all the sidewalks and stuff anyway, you know, it might be best just to go back to a standard subdivision and do twenty lots like you approved, and not even, not deal with the fifty-five plus and all the other. We're, we're basically proposing this based on what you've seen us build in there and the product we've done. You know, if we got to go back to, to the drawing board and doing all this other stuff, it might be best to do away with the four lots and just do a standard standalone subdivision. We, we think we're adding to the community by adding more of the same that we've already done.
Byron, if it were a standard subdivision, it wouldn't be a fifty-five plus.
No, and it wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't do all the.
Right.
The craftsman style, all the.
Right.
You know, we're, we're building four, five hundred thousand dollar homes, we're building a nice product.
I'm not disagreeing with you, by the way, I think it's beautiful.
Yeah, I think.
But it, but it would cause us to rethink the whole.
Right.
Everything we're, we're trying to, what we're proposing to the city that we'd like to do.
So it sounds like his concern is if you require sidewalks on both sides of the street, that costs may be in such a way that it doesn't make sense of having the four additional units.
Then approve the preliminary or the final plat, and we'll just go back to the original. So, hearing that, do we have a motion?
So I'll make a motion, and then you'll tell me if it's, if it works or not. Make motion that we approved the preliminary plat, but not the final plat, and then gives us a chance to go back and look at the sidewalk situation. I don't know if that worked for you Byron, I don't know what your tight schedule is, but try to get something resolved, so at least making a step forward.
Well, I think the person who purchased the property has probably a bigger time restraint than what we do. He's, he's undergone with the other commitments he's made, so it may, it may very well affect the, the project, for sure. I mean, what if, would the city council be okay if we just agreed to put sidewalks around the center section as well as where we already got proposed? Would that be acceptable?
I think that would be a good compromise for me to move it forward.
Here and the center.
Right, and just tie into the trail there, because you only have two around. At least, at least they could, everybody could cross the street and get to a sidewalk. I know it doesn't come to exactly what Doug wants, but.
Okay, so your, your motion is, what have you got for the motion?
Well, I killed it because I didn't have a second.
You do not have a motion on the.
Okay, so let's go over your motion again, Brian.
So, if I made a motion, then you still have to, if we said where we wanted sidewalks, can we do that, and then you still come back and do final plat? Or how would that work?
The city council needs to make a motion for what they feel is best for this neighborhood and this development. If there were conditions that the applicant didn't agree with, or felt like would jeopardize the development, then that's, you know, then he makes a choice of whether or not he comes back to request a change.
I would probably make the motion that.
But if you've addressed the density, you've addressed the waivers, the RV, and, and, you know, the things that have been discussed tonight, and you've addressed the sidewalk, you could grant preliminary and final, because then you're displacing those conditions.
Specify where you want the sidewalk, I think, and now.
I'll make a motion then. I'll make a motion, I'm fine with the density, I'm with the pavilion and everything, I'm fine with the RV. I don't think RVs fit in these areas. And I, I like the progress, they, that's a great asset to the city. I want the new Ford, I'm a little still concerned about the sidewalk, but I think we have a compromise if we have the sidewalk that goes around the interior meeting up with the pathway, and do preliminary and final plat approval.
Okay, with that, do we have a second? Second. We have a second, okay. Any other discussion? Mike?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries.
And as a side note, council, they do, that we will be bringing a development agreement back to you for review and approval. And so we will address the sidewalk issue at that time, so you can make sure it's exactly how you had intended with your motion tonight.
Hey Byron, I just ask you to just look and see if there's a way to go around. Just, I might as prove, but just look and see if there's a way.
All right, any other way of sitting there, I'm still excited to have you.
Do we have a motion to table number four and number five?
It's all moved.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, follow those in favor?
Aye.
Followed? Okay, next thing on the agenda is discussion regarding food trucks, now it's Dave.
May council, we can just have a short discussion and maybe get some feedback from the council. We don't need a decision, but we'd like some input. But we've, we've had a few requests in the past, and we have one, have requests now. We, we, they're getting more and more food trucks to come and, and frequent our community. I think it's a good thing. We have had in the past requests to have permanent power. We did one for a, a snow shack up by Smith's. And we did one, a, a taste market request permanent power out where they have their food truck and also their, uh, uh, snow shack. But we're getting some food vendor, food truck vendors that are asking for permanent power. And it makes a little bit of a dilemma, because permanent, they have to, they have to pay their impact fees and set permanent power up in a certain location. Food trucks by nature are mobile, where they go to different locations. And the concern that we've had, and also maybe concern of other businesses that build a brick and mortar building, is that now you're getting a, a food truck that is asking for permanent power, and they're going to stay in one location and not be mobile as, as they're supposed to be. So, we wanted to have some discussion on it, we talked about it with staff. Family like that, as of now, we feel like maybe that the food trucks ought to be mobile and that we shouldn't have permanent power. Like I say, there are a couple that did happen in the past, but as we get more and more food trucks. Now, the state legislature stepped in last year and created some business license regulations for food trucks. Sandra Henderson in our jurisdiction is one that spearheaded that. Most of that dealt with licensing. If somebody, if a food truck has a license and they had all their inspections in another city, another community can't have them do the same inspections and pay fees again. So they're trying to allow food trucks to be able to come in different communities without having to go through all the licensing requirements. But this is an issue that is coming up again, and we just wanted to know what your thoughts are with food trucks. If you don't care if people ask for permanent power and we hook it up in a temporary location, I don't know if, how long they'll be there, maybe they'll go to another location. But once the power's there, it's there. And we just wanted to have some discussion on your end.
So we're talking about running a li, a power line underground to pop up where their location is?
Yeah. Yeah, like in the one.
Like Zarasco, best street tacos.
Yeah, like the street taco now, if they, they have permanent power, there's a, there is a, what do you call them, John's not here, transformer. There's a transformer behind Big O, there's a transformer behind Arnie B's, and there would have to be a trench and a line dug in and put up where he currently is to have permanent power. Right now, most food trucks have a generator and use that so they can go to different places and, and sell their food, which is a good thing. The, we went to the food truck tonight, they had before council meeting, so. I'm not against food trucks, I think they're a great thing and they're gaining popularity all over. However, we just were concerned a little bit about having requests to have permanent power to where if they spend the money and get that set up, they may not be mobile, they might just stay right in one place. And so, we wanted some discussion on your end to see what your thoughts are. If you don't have a concern about that, we're sure happy to add.
I have two questions for you Dave. First is, what are other communities doing about this? I mean, certainly they've, they've talked about it. Number two, does they pay for the cost to bring the power?
They, they have to.
They pay the whole cost, or we?
No, they do have to pay the cost, they have to pay an impact fee, and they have to pay the cost to get there. They more than likely have to get the permission of the property owner, because they're, they're on somebody else's property.
Right.
And so, if, if all that came into effect, you know, we could put a, a power there. One of the discussions we had with staff is if, if they're there even for one or two or three years, and they go somewhere else, do we transfer that? Permanent power somewhere else, we have, are we required to move it because they've got a credit to the new location? It's just, there's, there's a couple of issues that we have to work through. But as far as other communities, I'm not sure about the permanent power. I know Daniel came from Provo City, and the, the hard part about it is that they're supposed to move. The, the license is only good for so much time, but it's, it's very difficult to enforce, because once your, your business license expires, you can get another and renew it. And at least Daniel, when he talked about Provo, some food trucks will stay right here, and then when they're required to move, they'll move twenty feet or ten feet. And so they technically meet the ordinance, and then they go back and forth.
You've got a part of them that have just parking lots, all of them.
And I know in some states, Texas included, they have a big area where all the food trucks and community people can come and have their choice. And we talked about that a little bit, maybe we have a location in the city where on weekends, food trucks can come to one location and have the power there and.
A lot of cities do do them just permanently, they want it to come over and. You're a food court, you're a free, free court type guy.
I have a question for you Dave, so how's sales tax work on these? Do they have to report in each city when they're there? Or how, how do they know that we get sales tax if they're here?
They do, there's a sales tax number they have to have, and I think, I told Krista she probably didn't need to be here because we would maybe get into licensing, but they, she, they do track that.
So every time they move, they use a different sales tax?
Well, we could still require them to license if they come in, we just can't charge them for new inspections and that. So we can license them while they're here.
But I'm, I'm just saying, if they go from Provo to here, do they use a different sales tax code each time? So we get credit for that? We don't get credit for it.
I do think we get credit, but I'll check on that later.
The other, the other thing, I guess I'm a little concerned, it's, it's a lot cheaper to drive a old van truck around, and, and when you have people put up brick and mortar buildings and are a permanent part of the community, I have a little bit of challenge if somebody wants to be here permanently with the food truck. I think, I did food trucks as they move around, so. I probably, right now, would have a hard time with giving them permanent place, the permanent power, permanent water, something like that.
And I feel, I feel the same way. I feel like a food truck is a food truck that moves, and, yeah, I, I don't think they should have permanent power.
So what's the problem with them plugging into like an RV's versus nothing permanent power? They just have to plug it in?
I don't know if there's a big problem, it's, it's quite a ways, and I don't know.
And I think that's where Pace Market put in one out, and Pace Market may just run it through there.
Yeah.
And then just charge them accordingly, but.
I don't know, you'd have to, I'd have to ask Ron about.
Private property, how do you stop that?
Well, right, that's.
About the amperage, if, you know, if you have an extension cord, I don't know, you know, I don't know how much power they use, so there might be some issues that way as well, but.
And they're all different.
There are some guidelines as far as making sure lines are covered if you build a road. I mean, because with fireworks when we go, we've got a.
Yes, they have to have special cords, protection, and you have to look also at the amperage, because without resistance, eventually get to low voltage. So there's a lot more requirements than just saying we're going to plug into a building.
But being mobile, how many of them look at that? How many times does he go down and check it?
Well, if you want a good tacos, you go all the time.
Okay.
Any other comments, if not, is that, is that?
So the downside to them putting in a permanent power source and then moving away is like, what happened? So I didn't understand, so if they move away and they go somewhere else and they put in a permanent power source, we owe them money?
No, I don't know if we owe them money, but the, the, when you put in, when you put in permanent power, just like a house, you have to pay the impact fee because it's impacting the system. If that, if that goes away, but they're moving somewhere else, you know, it's like a house, if a house burns down or a house, and they're, that property where that house was has a credit, because they've already paid the impact for that facility there. So it's a little more difficult on, on a mobile truck, because if they, if they pay for a permanent power in this location, and then they say they moved across town and wants to put their food truck there, and, and maybe it's not an issue, maybe say, well, you can, but you're going to have to pay the cost to do it over here, and we'll take this one down.
That's kind of the way I feel.
If they pay all the cash, the, the cost to do that.
The city shouldn't be collecting the cost, that's my right. Okay, you've got enough?
An example that we do have is this, the snow shack or whatever that's across from Smith's. That's a seasonal one, but he did have actually a pole put in and permanent, but he, he doesn't, he's not open at this point in time. He has a seasonal, um, permit.
Now, is his power, is his power more than the rest of, the rest of us's? Where he's seasonal, like a storage shed, or I mean a barn or whatever?
Yeah, I keep, I don't know.
I'm not sure what Ray's on, but he pays, he has a.
I was going to say, that would be another issue that I would have, is everybody else full time year round, we pay, should be a lot cheaper than somebody that's just there for a couple of months. I mean, for, if you want to talk, you need to come up here, and you need to state your name.
You don't have to in a few weeks.
Yeah, in a few weeks, you don't have to.
Next time, just going to take one of the empty chairs. I'm Brett Christensen, councilman-elect. That's actually my brother's snow shack, and so I've, I've moved it a hundred times, that's my, my go-to duty. And when he got the permanent power, I'll tell you, it really made a difference, because he says his cost actually went down, because he was pulling off of Karen's floral, and it was costing them more money, she was charging them more than what the city actually was in the impact fee. So he, he benefits from it, even though he's paid more directly to the city. So that's kind of a benefit that way. As you're talking about these, if we've got locations that work really well for trucks, the power's there, the next people can come in, you can charge them a setup fee, whatever, to take over that position. But also, it's putting these food trucks in, in a little bit more dense communities, and who wants a generator running? That's honestly, and you walk up there, you're smelling the fumes. If you can give them power, they're paying for it, I can see it going both directions, you know? But I, I think that if it's going in and it's being put there, it could be a benefit to them having it close. I know that those power cords that, we ran for that snow shack across the road, they pulverized them. I mean, you cut that wire in half, and it's just, it's just demolished, even though they were protected. So, the closer the power, the safer. So the closer the power, the safer I think it is. They're pulling them more amps, they're paying into the system. But you know, like you say, you worry about them coming and going. But I mean, you could do it different ways, but that's just, that's my insight.
Okay. All right, Eve, you got enough to go on and?
Unless you guys have any other.
You need a motion, what do you need? Or just, just the discussion? Just discussion.